Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for February 6, 2024. If I could ask everyone to please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Kim, could you please call the roll? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Voice?
Here.
Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Cor?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Next item on the agenda is the approval. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes from admin.
All right. Seeing no changes, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us into public communications. Absolutely love seeing a packed room tonight, all the smiling faces out there. We've got a few things under public recognition, and the first one is our, oh, so I'm sorry, I skipped, community events. Are there any community events?
Oh, you threw a curveball.
I will, so I'm looking at the agenda and I missed the top one.
Okay, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We got quite a few things going on in the city of Kent at the Cecil Showware Center. So on February 9th, we had the Seattle Thunderbird playing the Vancouver Giants. February 14th, we got the Seattle Thunderbirds playing at Wenatchee as well. February 17th, Toby Matt is coming to town, his tour 2024. And we had the Thunderbird playing at Everett Silvertip on the 24th. On March 1st, we got Tacoma Stars versus the Harrisburg Heat. And April 4th, we got Mercy Me and all the kids. April 10th and 11th, Paw Patrol, sound like fun. Then we'll be back June 1st with the Kent International, and then August 17th is Lamb of God. So lots of things going on at Cecil Showware Center. If you haven't been there for an event or Thunderbird game, please go and support them. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On March 3rd, we have a recycling event, so for any of you who have those items at home, paint, things that have been hard, you don't know what to do with them, how do I get rid of this, batteries, all sorts of things that you've been wondering, how do I not pollute but get rid of this properly? March 3rd is the time to do it over at Hogan Park. And we have also the Spotlight Series. So they just had a sold-out show with the guitars, with the international guitars, and we have another few shows to go, so check out the Spotlight Series. You can get your tickets and hear some great music.
Councilmember Fincher, that March 2nd, I think.
Is it March 2nd? March 2nd.
Thursday on Sunday, yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we will roll into public recognition, and our first item on the agenda is Employee of the Month. So every month here at the city of Kent, our employees have the opportunity to nominate one of their coworkers as Employee of the Month. And the idea is making sure that we're highlighting those employees and saying thank you that really exemplify our mission, vision, values, and goals here at the city of Kent. Go the extra mile above and beyond to provide that amazing customer service to both their internal customers, their coworkers, as well as all of our residents and businesses. So it's my honor tonight to announce the February 24 Employee of the Month, and it's Jan Hyatt. So I'm going to read a little bit of good stuff about Jan and then turn it over to Holly, our HR Director, to say a few words. So Jan started working at the city on March 2nd, 2015, as an administrative assistant too in human resources. She was reclassed on December 1st, 2016, to a Training Development Coordinator. Jan was again reclassed on March 6, 2018, to a Training and Development Analyst, and on February 1st, 2020, she moved to Risk Management as a Risk Analyst. She was reclassed again, as you can see, there's a theme here, right? Continues to take on responsibilities and new tasks. She was reclassed again on January 1st, 2023, to her current position as Senior Risk Human Resources Analyst. Jan performs professional-level duties to develop, implement, and coordinate the city's safety, accident prevention, employee training, and risk management programs to control and minimize city loss exposures. Jan was nominated because she is a tremendous asset in the Human Resources Department. Her contributions have been essential to the overall success of the department and the city of Kent altogether. For Jan, there is no job too small or too big when it comes to contributing to the success of the Risk Management Division and the entire HR team. Jan is experienced, knowledgeable in whatever role she takes, and gives great mentoring and counsel to others. She is awesome to work with and always has something positive to say. Being both accurate and compassionate is important to her, and she communicates with others to reflect this value. Jan is the epitome of a hard worker. She's engaged, is engaged in earnest and energetic work, and she manages, as she manages the city's workers' comp program, she's responsive to the needs of our injured workers and is genuinely concerned about their recovery. Jan continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate her as our February Employee of the Month.
Council President and council members and members of the community, I wanted to personally thank Jan and celebrate a very special employee, Jan Hyatt, who's been with us, coming up on nine years in March. Some of the sentiments included in the nomination are that she's selfless and giving and unwavering in her integrity, and I could not agree more. While she's not a huge fan of public recognition, I want to acknowledge what a hardworking, fun, and inclusive and wonderful person you are on the HR Department, and congratulations.
Congratulations, Jan. All right, the next item on our agenda is a proclamation for Black History Month, and Gwen Allen Carson, the Executive Director of KABAC, is here with us this evening. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and Gwen, if you want to join us at the podium. When we were out in the hallway, I told Gwen, I said, today, on my Facebook memories popped up a picture of Gwen and I from 2018 when we did this proclamation. So we've been doing this for a few years, and I'm very, very grateful for the consistency of service that you and KABAC provide and all the work that you're doing in our community. So I'm going to read the proclamation, then I'll turn it over to you. Whereas since 1976, every United States President has officially designated the month of February as National Black History Month to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience. And whereas the observance of Black History Month began in 1926, when Harvard-trained historian Carter G. Woodson and Minister Jesse Moreland sponsored the first National Negro Holiday History Week, which was celebrated the second week in February, and later in the 1960s as a part of the civil rights movement, the observance evolved into Black History Month. And whereas Black History Month serves as a celebration of the accomplishments and contribution of Black Americans throughout the history of our nation, the fullness of the African-American history and culture, and a time to recognize that across the generations, countless Black Americans have demonstrated profound moral courage and resilience to help shape our nation for the better. And whereas much of the city of Kent's strengths and success can be attributed to the diversity of culture and traditions that are celebrated by residents of this great city, and whereas African-Americans have played significant roles and made long-lasting contributions to our city's history and the history of Washington's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development, while working tirelessly to contribute to every aspect of American history, including business, education, medicine, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the contributions and legacy of those who helped build our nation, advance the cause of civil rights for all Americans, continue to fight against prejudice to secure the lives of dignity and opportunity for all of our residents and strengthen our families and communities. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim February 2024 to be Black History Month in the city of Kent, and encourage all residents to join me in honoring the many contributions made by African-Americans to our city, state, and nation, and to participate in the many educational and inspirational events celebrating February 2024 as Black History Month.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members, and all staff here at the city of Kent. I would like to say that I have been a proud resident of the city of Kent since 2004. I live up on East Hill, and lots of things going on, exciting things going on, growth is happening up on East Hill, and we're proud to be a part as residents and people who want to do things to help make things better. As you heard the mayor read the historical piece about Black History Month, I just would like to add why Black History Month is important to all of us, because it affords us the chance to challenge what we learned in history, to dig deeper and find out the actual events of the past that were not taught in schools. It allows us to learn about, celebrate, and honor Black leaders. Many of those leaders endured sacrifice and suffering, and most have not been honored, but standing here, I would like to honor all of our ancestors. And Madam Mayor, I hope you don't mind, but I always like to make sure that those who are in the room can be counted. So I would like to invite all of those who consider themselves in this audience, Black or African-American, to come and stand with us and take another picture. Can we do that, please? Everybody in here who considers themselves Black or African-American, please join us for another picture on this historical moment in the city of Kent. Thank you so much, and we're looking forward to Juneteenth up on Moral Meadows, June 22nd. The park's going to be ready, all right?
Very, very excited about that. And I do want to just also give a very special thank you to Gwen. She has spent some time with us, some long, quality time waiting to testify in Olympia on behalf of the city in both the House and the Senate in the last couple of weeks. A lot of waiting around for a one-minute of testimony, but I can tell you, her testimony was very compelling. Very, very grateful for you taking the time and supporting the community, Gwen, thank you. All right, this is the fun stuff of council meetings. And we next have recognition of our Adopt a Street participants. Tony DiNati is going to join us and talk about the program and honor our participants, but I just want to start out with a heartfelt thank you. The work that you all do to keep our community clean is, it does not go unnoticed, we could not do it without you, could not be more grateful. I don't know how to say thank you enough, so I'm going to turn it over to Tony, and he can say thank you some more, and then we'll celebrate a little bit.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council President, council members. It's an honor to speak with you tonight and to be here and to review the 2023 Adopt a Street program and to celebrate those who have participated in it, making it another record-breaking year. My name's Tony DiNati, I'm the Conservation Coordinator in the Public Works Department, and I manage the Adopt a Street program, and I get to team all these volunteers here today. Again, thank you for this opportunity this evening to celebrate and recognize the true hometown heroes of our community, volunteers of the Adopt a Street program. Tonight is about expressing our gratitude to these dedicated individuals who take great pride in where they live and work. Their selfless commitment to maintaining the cleanliness of our community is truly inspiring, and it's an honor to celebrate their efforts with you tonight. Our volunteers, who range from individuals, couples, families, churches, neighborhood groups, businesses, and organizations, continue to make significant, a significant impact on the cleanliness of our community. Whether it's through the Adopt a Street program initiated in 2012, or the Adopt a Spot program, which followed in 2018, these folks have contributed to this program's success and record-breaking growth. Tonight, we acknowledge not just the progress made, but the exceptional dedication of our volunteers in this past year. They go beyond picking up just litter. They're also protecting our wildlife, preserving our water quality, and serving as outstanding role models for our children and community members, teaching us the importance of taking pride of where we live and work. Now unfortunately, not all the groups could make it here tonight in person, but as you can see, we have a pretty fantastic turnout. Also want to give us, extend a special thanks to Mayor Ralph and council members Fincher and Cor, and any other council members who have participated or are currently participating on an Adopt a Street program. It's your leadership that sets the example for our entire community. So thank you for that. Now, let's celebrate the achievements of the past year. In 2023, like I said, we experienced a record-breaking year. Of the three categories that I track, we have 1,191 volunteers, collect 1,199 bags of trash, totaling an impressive 1,905 volunteer hours. These numbers are a testament to the dedication and hard work of these hometown heroes. They're going out there, you know, 12 months a year, in the hot heat, in the cold snow, and ice and rain, they're continual. Every weekend, I get just a huge, that's the best part of my Monday, is coming to see all the cleanups that happened over the weekend and entering them into my spreadsheet, and you can see the growth here. So I think these folks deserve a pretty huge round of applause. From one end of the city to the next, their impact is felt, just like you said, and we're always looking for more help. So the city will supply litter grabbers, safety vests, gloves, garbage bags to get you started, and will even remove and discard the collected trash that you pick up, and then will also erect a sign with a name of your choosing in your adopted area. So for those who are listening or here and want to get involved and join this elite group, you can feel free to contact me directly or shoot, check out our website, shoot me an email or a call, and together we'll continue to clean up Kent one bag at a time. So again, I want to thank you for your continued dedication to this program and our community, and I hope that '24 is an even better year. So thank you again.
I also want to make sure that we recognize Tony. So all of the volunteers out there, you know that the program wouldn't run if Tony was not, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, would not run if Tony was not, did not, this was not a passion of his, and he takes it very seriously, works with our volunteers, is very, very responsive, so I think we should give Tony a round of applause as well. You have a, you have a fan club, Tony?
I'm humble.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you.
And again, thank you to all of our volunteers. You see how much work is being done throughout the city. There is no way that we could do this on our own, so we are really, really grateful, and I do think it's a fantastic example for our kids. I am positive that my kids have picked up so much trash in the city that they will never litter anywhere in their life, because they know what it's like to pick up somebody else's trash, and I think it's a, it sets a really good example. So always excited to see families out there, our business partners and neighbors, it's just a fabulous program. So again, thank you all so very much. Oh, and I'm getting the signal back there, we'd like all of our volunteers. Tracy, do you want to do it this way, or do you want them to come up here? All right, if we could get all of our Adopt a Street volunteers to come up to the front, we're going to do a group picture.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Ready, one, two, three? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Again, thank you, everyone, that helps take care of our city, we're very, very grateful. So we are going to move on to another group that helped take care of our city every single day, and that's our council members. So this evening, we have three council members that are being sworn in again, meaning that they won their election, and we've got one brand-new council member tonight. So I'm going to ask the council members that are being sworn in to join me down at the front, we will do the oath of office. If you want to look over there at your family, and if you could raise your right hand, and I'm going to give you a hint up front, remember your council seat number, because that will be one of the two fill-in blanks that we'll have as we do the oath. I say your name.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. All right.
Hey. Congratulations, Councilmember Corr, you got some little shoes to fill, so I'm sure you will do a great job, and we are here to support you and make sure you're very successful. Congratulations.
Thank you, Council President.
Well, you're the council president, you call me.
It is, it is officially a passing of the baton, passing of the gavel. So before we go on to the next item, a couple of things I want to say, congratulations, Council President Corr, very excited to work with you and move this council forward in the next couple of years, so thank you. Former council president Boyes.
Yes. So I think this time, Councilmember Corr, are you gonna talk about your appointment?
I'm, we're gonna get there, just one second.
Okay, are you talking to me? Oh, I thought you asked me a question, okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, I am talking to you. I just, I didn't want this moment to pass without a heartfelt thank you for the leadership that you have provided this council for the last four years. I really consider you to be the glue. You have been available to all of them, you've been available to me, I don't know how many 5:00 AM phone calls we have had.
It used to be seven, but now she's on 5:00 AM with my time, yeah.
So buckle up, that seems to be the best time to connect. Bill has really done an amazing job, and his leadership speaks volumes, bringing the council along. The role of the council president is really to get, get to consensus, help people find something in all of the items of business that we have, that they can support, facilitate that debate, and answer those questions, and really just provide that, that guidance and leadership. And I, in all of my time on the council and as mayor, I, I don't know that I've seen anybody do it with so much grace and integrity, so for you, I just want to say thank you, Bill, I'm grateful.
Well, I have to say, it's been a, thank you, thank you. It's been a very pleasure working with you. I have no doubt, you love this city, I mean, got this big sign, "Don't Mess with Kent" on your vehicle, so to me, that says a lot. But, you know, Dana, you and I came on this council together, and we kind of grew up together, and in my eyes, I say there's been a bit of time before you the best mayor period. I never see anyone that would care and have more compassion about this city than the people, so you are my best friend. I remember when we first came on, and I came council president, I told John, "I'm not gonna steal your white, but we could be spending a lot of time together," so, but, and we have spent a lot of time together, early phone calls and just talking throughout the day, and I still look forward to those calls as well, too, so, but, thank you very much for your leadership, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Boyes for his leadership, he has, one of his great skills is consensus building. He's able to bring people together, you can be at complete opposite ends, he's able to look in there, reach in there, and see what that nugget is that is held in common with, that you can come to. So I want to thank him for that, as you mentioned, always being available, whether it was in the middle of the day or the middle of the night, he would make a point to be, if he couldn't talk to you right then, to let you know he was gonna call you back, and he followed through on that. So I really respect his leadership, and thank you for just being a good, a good human also.
You're still my good friend, thank you.
All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the appointments to boards and commission. Council President Corr, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also want to thank Councilmember Boyes for his leadership and for being a good mentor, actually, the last four years. He's been available for phone calls and conversations, and we've made some trips to Olympia together, so it's been, it's been exciting. And as I start this council presidency, I know that all of us have the same goal of serving our community and working towards making sure Kent is a better place for all of us. So I hope that we will all serve, continue to serve with integrity, transparency, and compassion. With that in mind, I took all of your feedback and comments and made sure we worked towards assigning the appointments, so I will read those as following. For the Lodging Tax Committee, it'll be Councilmember Boyes. For the Regional Fire Authority, it'll be Councilmember Boyd, Councilmember Larmour, and Councilmember Trautner. So we are giving some new members a chance to work on, you know, building relationships with the RFA while keeping Councilmember Trautner with her amazing experience there to be that, that liaison on building that bridge. For Human Services Commission, it'll continue to be Councilmember Michaud. And for Firefighters Relief and Pension Front Board will also be Councilmember Michaud. And the Arts Commission Liaison, Councilmember Fincher. And for the Committee of the Whole, it's a little bit of a change, but mostly the same. So for Parks Committee, Councilmember Michaud is the subject matter expert, Councilmember Larmour will be for economic and community development, because I know she had strong desire to be there, and she's mentioned that a few times, and she was on that committee before. Public Works will be Councilmember Fincher, continue to be, and for the public safety, Councilmember Boyes had strong, he, he's, he values that, and that's what he is very passionate about. So with that, I look forward to working with all of you and your guidance, and we'll continue to work together, and Mayor, I'm looking forward to working with you on this as well, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to reports this evening, an opportunity for you to hear from everyone seated up here at the, at the dais about the work that they're doing outside of the council and committee meetings. There's a lot of things that go on in making sure that the voice of, of Kent is represented across the region, across the state, and making sure that, that our perspectives are a part of those conversations. It takes a lot of work, and I am grateful for all of you for being on those committees and making sure that we're being represented. I'm gonna start with a report tonight, a little bit different than my normal committee reports, want to talk a little bit about some of the things that have been going on in the legislature this last few weeks. So it is a short session of the legislature, meaning there's a six, it's a 60-day session, so halfway through. Council adopted a legislative agenda of finding a funding source for additional public safety staffing and programs. So everything from additional police officers, prosecutors, public defenders, our CARES program, which is our co-responder model where we work with the fire department. There is a, a law on the books right now in Olympia that allows a county to go out for a .03% sales tax for public safety, which is equates to about three cents on a $10 purchase. The ask of the legislature was to allow that to be a council-matic decision for cities to be able to, to leverage that funding. In the world of policing today, with the, the changes, the requirements, many, many things that the City of Kent has adopted, things like de-escalation and the sergeant-to-officer ratio, the reality is, it takes more, takes more people, takes more people to do the job, calls take longer to handle, the complexity level has gone up significantly. I know you all can't turn the news on in the morning without hearing what's going on across the region when it comes to crime. We need resources as a city, and we are not the only city that needs those resources. So the ask to the legislature was just that, that they allow city councils across the state to take that vote, to, to take it upon themselves to figure out how to take care of their cities, which is the paramount duty of a city, right? Public safety is the paramount duty of any city. We have amazing representatives, and Representative Chris Sterns in the House, and Senator Karen Kaiser in the Senate, and they sponsored these bills in their respective chambers. Very, very grateful for their support and all of their work. I would say the majority of our delegation in all three of our legislative districts has been supportive of this. The bad news part is that in the House, it was heard in the local government committee, and there was a decision made to not take a vote on it, so the bill died in the House. Senator Kaiser was able to get a hearing for this in the Senate Ways and Means Committee last week. Again, we had both Council President Corr and Councilmember Boyes come to Olympia and testify. Gwen Randall Smith, another small business owner, and multiple cities from around the state all testify, and the Ways and Means Committee chose not to bring it up for a vote, which means that it died. Very frustrated, because I don't honestly know what Plan B is. I don't know, I don't know how we take care of our city in the way that it needs to be taken care of, and that we have heard over and over again from our residents that they're, they have an expectation, and rightfully so. So stay tuned, it's not completely over. I am hoping that by some small miracle, the legislature decides that they're hearing from enough cities that really, really want to take care of their communities, to give them with this opportunity, but it's, it's getting to be less and less of a, of a hope. So gonna encourage folks, support it or not, reach out to legislators, we're gonna keep working and doing everything we can to take care of our city, so. That is my report, I'm gonna turn it over to Pat Fitzpatrick, our CAO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council. Starting to lose my voice, so I'll be pretty short here. One of the things I want to highlight is, last week, staff met with our federal consultant, who's helping us develop some requests for federal funding for a few projects that we have. I intend to work with a couple of individuals from the Police Department, ECD, to do a presentation to council at a workshop coming up very soon. I don't want to give you, I can't give you all the details, but we have three requests that we're drilling in on. One revolving public safety technology, another is a partnership with our regional educational institutions, both at the Kent School District and our local colleges, and the other is directly for a capital program improvement involving one of our Kent schools. So I'll have more details on that in the coming weeks, and other than that, my report is in DCAO report. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Pat. Council President Corr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I serve on several committees, so one of them is K4C, King County Cities Climate Collaboration, and we had our meeting last week, we are working on the bills coming through the legislation based for that King County, that K4C cares about all the, all the cities, and one of the bills is RERAP Act, House Bill 2049. We're trying to get some of our cities to sign on, so I will forward that to you all, if you feel the need to sign on it, I would appreciate it, otherwise you're personally, individually, you can do that as well, or as a council. We also had a conversation about the 80 mil, 85 million dollar coming from Commerce for EV chargers, and I'm excited to see there's actually several locations here in Kent that will be funded by that, so that's, that's very exciting going forward. And I also serve on Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Advisory Council as the chair. Again, conversation was about the bills, legislative session, and what we can expect coming from there, and we'll continue to have that conversation. And we also had our Committee of the Whole this afternoon, and there was a lot of, I think I'll let the SMEs actually share all the items that were on the agenda, and we had a long meeting, and then we had our council workshop, and we talked about funding for our key hub site up on East Hill, and we'll be having more conversations about that, on how to fund that, what the best way would be now that we're moving forward with bids, so, and that concludes my, my report, and I'll go to the left over here, Councilmember Trautner.
Thank you, Council President. It has been my pleasure to serve as the subject matter chair for the Economic and Community Development Group the last couple of years, I'll be turning that over to Councilmember Larmour, but at our meeting earlier today, we moved to award the Fall 2023 Lodging Tax Grants to the recipients selected by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which, thank you, Councilmember Boyes, for being a part of that committee. We awarded seven grants totaling $286,460 to support various tourism promotion incentives designed to attract both businesses and leisure travelers to Kent. So good work being done on that committee earlier this evening. I also sit on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority with Councilmember Larmour and Councilmember Boyd. We met last month at our new building down on Central, and we will meet tomorrow at 5:30, and that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Michaud.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, first, I serve on the King County Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee, and we are continuing to keep an eye on the county's Care and Closure Plan, that is the closure of the juvenile detention centers, that has been pushed back to 2028, and so the county is going to spend the next year getting public input before they move forward with that plan, so I encourage everyone to provide input and look into what exactly that plan is. All right, I also serve as the liaison to the council for the Human Services Commission, and at our last meeting, we appointed a new, well, I didn't, but the commission appointed a new chair, and that was Gwen, we all know Gwen, we saw her earlier today. And then we got a presentation from an organization called Eileen and Callie's Place, and they do different programs for girls who have aged out of foster care. So every year, they have a big, I think it's a graduation ceremony.
Birthday party.
Eighteenth, thank you, okay, eighteenth birthday party, thank you, and the girls get to go shopping and dress up, and it sounds like a lot of fun, hopefully I can go this year. And so she gave us a presentation, and that was really good to learn about that, and then we started talking about the application process for grants, so we're, the Human Services Department is looking at all sorts of different ways to reach out to organizations to get grants from organizations that haven't applied in the past. And then you know that we approved the CDBG plan, because we did that during COW. All right, so COW, I am the Parks and Human Services Subject Matter Chair, and we did a bunch of stuff. So the first thing was that we allocated funds from Skip to finance four affordable housing projects in South King County, two of which will be going up on the East Hill, so that is great for Kent. And then we approved the CDBG Action Plan, then we authorized a contract for a consultant in planning design of a spray park at Uplands Park down in the valley. And then we approved a purchase agreement to replace the surface area and the spinner at Lake Meridian Playground, and we also accepted grant funding for the Ruth property, Clark Lake, which is at Clark Lake, Springwood Park, and then the East Hill North Community Park. So it was a good day for parks and human services in Kent, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Michaud. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council President Corr. I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we will meet this coming Friday, so I will have a report next session.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyes.
Thank you, Madam President.
getting public input before they move forward with that plan. So, I encourage everyone to provide input and look into what exactly that plan is. All right. I also serve as the liaison to the council for the Human Services Commission. And at our last meeting, we appointed a new, well, I didn't, but the commission appointed a new chair, and that was Gwen. We all know Gwen, we saw her earlier today. And then we got a presentation from an organization called Eileen &amp; Kelly's Place, and they do different programs for girls who have aged out of foster care. So, every year, they have a big, I think it's a graduation ceremony.
Birthday party.
Eighteenth, thank you, okay. Eighteenth birthday party, thank you. And the girls get to go shopping and dress up, and it sounds like a lot of fun. Hopefully, I can go this year. And so, she gave us a presentation, and that was really good to learn about that. And then we started talking about the application process for grants. So, the Human Services Department is looking at all sorts of different ways to reach out to organizations to get grants from organizations that haven't applied in the past. And then, you know that we approved the CDBG plan, because we did that during COW. All right. So, COW, I am the Parks and Human Services Subject Matter Chair, and we did a bunch of stuff. So, the first thing was that we allocated funds from Skip to finance four affordable housing projects in South King County, two of which will be going up on the East Hill. So, that is great for Kent. And then we approved the CDBG Action Plan. Then we authorized a contract for a consultant in planning design of a spray park at Uplands Park down in the valley. And then we approved a purchase agreement to replace the surface area and the spinner at Lake Meridian Playground. And we also accepted grant funding for the Ruth property, Clark Lake, which is at Clark Lake, Springwood Park, and then the East Hill North Community Park. So, it was a good day for parks and human services in Kent. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council President Corr. I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and we will meet this coming Friday, so I will have a report next session.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. So, for COW, I think you mentioned some of that, and the only thing I wanted to add is that we are in shorts policy, like everything else is continuing to arise. But we are working with Elaine and some of the outside people to try to monitor that, but like everything else, insurance policy is rising. And Madam President talked about the new Key Hop Kent Operations Center that we'll be looking at sometime in February, once the bids get back. At this time, that's all I have to report, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Councilmember Boyd.
Council President Corr. I just was appointed to the RFA Board, and I haven't been there yet, so I have nothing to report, but looking forward to reporting.
Thank you, and welcome. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam President. Public Works, we talked about work on a levy that's going to be done, that's not going to only help flood protection, but it's also going to help preserve the habitat there, help boost the habitat. We talked about a booster pump station to help with water going to the West Hill and a number of other things. So, tonight, we only had four items, which was a change from what we've been doing recently. King Conservation District, their native plant sale pickup is March 2nd and 3rd, so they have all sorts of other things there. So, even if you didn't order plants, it's a good time to go. You're going to learn different methods about not only plants, but also some things about animals, about your yard, all sorts of things, soil health, a number of different things. Most important about King Conservation District, which is kingcd.org, is the elections. Right now is the election period. Election closes February 13th. It's an online-only election. This is one that you've heard me talk about, trying to get it on the regular election cycle, because it's expensive to do it this way, and not as many people know about it. So, to get it more out into the public, so that we have both more people running for the supervisor seats, more people voting for who represents them, February 13th is the deadline. You can go again to kingcd.org and vote. MID Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee, we were looking at some new programs, and they would be funded by underspend. So, programs that had not used the funding that they were allotted, that money is back with MID Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee, and we are looking at, we suspend that now. And that will mainly be going to programs, looking at what programs need additional funds and performance of those programs. And then I think that is Arts Commission. There's the new show over in the gallery, the gallery being over in Centennial, and the Spotlight Series. Remember to check out the Spotlight Series, buy your tickets, and see some great musical shows. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Mayor Rata concludes our report. As you see, all of our council members are extremely busy, and will be busy for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Item number six on our agenda is a public hearing. We will now hold the public hearing on ordinance adopting amendments to the Building Code and Fire Code. So, staff will give a presentation, and then I'll invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may ask questions during the hearing. No action will be taken this evening, and any further action will be taken at a future council meeting. Not exactly sure of the date of that yet. So, if you're here to testify on this matter or present written statements or evidence, you can sign up here at the front with Kim for that, and we'll call those public speakers when we're done with the presentation. So, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on the ordinance adopting amendments to the Building and Fire Code, and I would like to ask Matt Gilbert, our Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development, to make the presentation.
President COW and council members, it's nice to be able to talk to you tonight and take care of some business for ECD. As you know, the state of Washington requires that local jurisdictions adopt building codes, building safety. There's kind of a range of requirements there. These are updated every three years. They pertain to structural elements, mechanical systems, plumbing, energy, fire protection, et cetera. It's quite a body of work that's presented, that's put together by the State Building Code Council. In order to administer those, the city of Kent needs to adopt them locally, but they're really a function of the state, their past, they become effective when the state says they become effective whether we adopt them or not. But adoption locally gives us the ability to administer these codes. So, it's required, and it's an important thing that we do every three years. In May, the council adopted those, the new, they're called the 2021 Codes, and they always lag a few years behind because of the pace of development. We adopted that suite of codes. Now, there's a new code that the state included in that kind of family of codes this year. It's called the Wildland Urban Interface Code. It's kind of a mouthful, but what it basically is, it provides, is a code that provides additional wildfire protection to structures that are located near forested areas. You know, as you know, wildfires have become more and more prevalent in our state in the last, well, in the last decade, really. The Department of Natural Resources tracks this and shows, I mean, just exponential growth in the last, since 1983, it's, the acres that have burned in the state are much higher. And so, that's led the legislature to start thinking about what this means, or what proactive steps the state needs to take in order to minimize the damage and minimize the need for resources for fire suppression. So, this is one of those things. Because Kent is largely developed, we're an inner-ring suburb, there isn't a lot, this legislation won't have a major effect on Kent. In Kent, we have about 30,000 parcels of land. This legislation is map-based, so basically, if there's forested areas and homes nearby, those homes will have to meet some higher standards when they build new stuff, like decks or sheds. But it's only about 800 parcels out of the 30,000 in Kent that might be affected. Again, it's, like I said, it's all map-based. The Department of Natural Resources produces that map that shows who's affected. And really, it's pretty light touch. I would say what we're likely to see, what the average, or the homeowner who might be located in one of these urban interface areas is likely to experience this by maybe having higher costs associated with building a deck, because the code requires heavier timber construction that's more fire-resistant for any new structures. This is not retroactive, it only applies to new things, to new buildings, new decks, new sheds, new accessory buildings, et cetera. So, we don't expect a major impact. But again, this is required, and something we'll just administer locally. I meant to get into a whole digression here, but I'll spare you that. Basically, wildlands are forested areas, grassland areas, areas that can burn. This is kind of hard to read, maybe you have it in front of you, but this is Kent, it's lightly outlined there. There's the red area, kind of to the right of the map is Ophelia Seuss Creek. That's the area where we'll primarily see residents affected by these new rules. The other areas are mostly parks and wetlands and steep slopes and other areas that aren't going to be built on anyway. So, again, it's low-impact type of new piece of legislation. As the mayor mentioned, this hearing is required because this is a development regulation. Once it's complete, the council will be able to act. But actually, the Department of Commerce is also reviewing our proposal. Once they're done, then we'll come back for further action. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Council, any questions for Matt? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Kim, do we have anyone signed up?
We do not.
Any written testimony been submitted?
None.
Okay. So, with that, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Next item up is public comment. So, the public comment period is our opportunity to speak to the council and the mayor on issues that relate to city of Kent or agenda items that the council will consider. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington strictly prohibits people from using public comment opportunity for political campaign purposes, including to support or oppose a ballot measure or seek candidate, or supporting a candidate for public office. Speakers may not give political campaign speeches, but instead must speak concerning a matter on the city council's agenda or matters concerning the general business of the city. Further, in providing public comments, speakers must address the mayor and the council as a whole. Remarks intended to target an individual on the dais are not permitted. Finally, please note that public comment is an opportunity for you to provide information to the mayor and city council that you would like for us to consider, but we will not be able to answer questions during the meeting itself. Kim, do we have any speakers?
No.
All right. Thank you. Item number eight is consent calendar. This is a compilation of items that the council has considered at the Committee of the Whole meeting. We've got items A through O. Is, sorry, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, the consent calendar is adopted. All right, we do not have anything under other business this evening, so we will move on to bids. We've got three bids, all in the public works realm. Joining us is our Public Works Director, Chad Baron.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President Corr, council. Good to be here, feels like we're back in business. Three bids this evening. We do have a busy spring coming, and we'll start tonight with the 2023 City Safety Road Diets Bid. This is a grant-funded project to re-stripe three streets in town, Fourth Avenue North between 228th and West James Street. This is north of James and running up to where 228th intersects with 76th, or feels like Fourth Avenue North. So, we're going from the existing four lanes to have bike lanes both directions and take out a lane of travel. So, we'd have a two-way left turn lane, and then one lane in each direction. So, the intent here, excuse me, the intent here is to reduce the number of lanes, hopefully reduce the travel speeds in that area, but without significantly reducing the throughput. We don't have a lot of volume up there, and that's a road that's more of a legacy road from when we had a lot more lanes. So, excited about that one. Another one's on West Meager Street from Lincoln Avenue, and then along Smith to Fourth Avenue North. Again, we have two lanes in each direction there. We'd have one lane in each direction with a two-way left turn lane, and then bicycle lanes in each direction. And then up on the West Hill, south to 60th and 259th, this runs between Pack Highway and Military Road. We have two very wide lanes there, and so we're gonna mark those narrower with bicycle lanes in each direction. We also have sidewalks on that section. This is an area right now that's really being built, or impacted, we'll say, by the Sound Transit Federalway Link Extension Project, and so we'll have new pavement, fresh pavement markings down there. We have new pavement on the east end of this that we'll mark now, we'll mark the section that Sound Transit's working on as that project is wrapping up. So, just putting this out to bid, got two bids received. Low bid was $1,234,140, which is specialized pavement markings, we've worked with them before. This is higher than the engineer's estimate, but it is within, roughly within the realm of where we're at. And again, we had largely supported by grant funds. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for Chad? Okay, seeing none, a motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor, I move to award the 2023 City Safety Road Diets Project to Specialized Pavement Markings LLC in the amount of $1,106,710, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second. Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion passes 7-0.
All right, next project. We've talked over the years about the condition of our streets and trying to keep them in as good a shape as we possibly can. One of the best ways we could do that is with what's called chip seal, where we go over the original pavement and seal the top of it and add just a little bit of rock as a wearing course to help protect the pavement underneath. The 277th Street corridor was open roughly over 20 years ago now. The pavement's wearing quite a bit, and we want to chip seal that. So, we put out for advertisement, and you can see up in the left corner of this picture, starting down at the city limits, coming up 277th around the corner, and along 116th toward Kent Kangley, chip sealing that entire run of roadway. That's where we get the 277th Street and 116th Avenue Southeast title. So, put that up for bids. This, of course, is some of the streets we've done just in the last couple of years, 200th Street, back that up. Three bids received. Low bid was from Doolittle Construction for $797,000 and change, which is underneath the engineer's estimate on this bid, and a really good bid compared to the other two that we got. So, we're excited about that one. Any questions?
Any questions for Chad? Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chad, when will this work be happening?
Summertime, and it's happening July and August.
Okay.
You'd have good weather. They might come in earlier if we get a weather window, but they do like to come in and get the work done in a hurry.
Will let everyone know?
Yes.
Thank you.
Follow Travel Kent, or Drive Kent, that's where, yeah, all the updates. All right, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, our, is our motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor, I move to award the 2024 Chip Seal Project to Doolittle Construction LLC in the amount of $797,037.50, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second. Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right, last one, take us home, Chad.
Yep, thank you. Last bid, this is a big one for us, and we've talked with council about this a number of times over the years. We have the 76th Avenue South road raising. We've done two sections of this, just south of 212th Street. One, we call it the middle section. The other one, the north section, which is intersecting with 212th, and now we're ready to tackle the south section of the road. This is where 76 crosses Mill Creek. And so, we started to collect grants for this work about six or seven years ago with a grant from the Department of Ecology for improvements to Mill Creek Channel, which runs underneath 76, then along 76 for quite a stretch here, and is also, of course, flooding 76 on occasion when the water gets high. We continued to seek grants. We were successful in getting grants from the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board last summer for $5 million. The Ecology Grant was just under $3 million. And then we got another $3 million in November that council accepted from the Transportation Improvement Board. So, very excited to have of the $13.8 million of this construction contract, about $11 million paid for by grants. So, really, really excited to have this one going. This will get 76 up and out of the water, will improve the flood capacity in the area, should reduce, eliminate flooding on the street itself, but also allow for conveyance from upstream on Mill Creek. So, as we're coming later this spring to talk about the Mill Creek Reestablishment Project, this is a key component of that, removing material out of the lower end of the creek and improving the habitat in this end of the creek. So, I'm very excited that we're able to connect all those dots on this single project. So, put out for bids, got three bids, with a low bid of $13,825,000 roughly, underneath the engineer's estimate of $15.2 million, and excited to have active construction with that low bid. Any questions?
Questions for Chad? Okay, seeing none, a motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor, I move to award the Mill Creek 76th Avenue South Culvert Improvement Project to Active Construction Incorporated in the amount of $13,824,824.01, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
Got a motion in two seconds? Any discussion?
Madam, I just want to point out, as the director had mentioned, grant money, the amount of grant money that we've talked about tonight, not only in public works projects, but also in parks, that we have a staff who does tremendous work in getting grants, and in some of our other departments, too. But without that, we would not have nearly the amount of work done. Our city would be in, well, it's sad to think of what it would be without it, so, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thanks, Chad. Lots of work ahead.
Mm-hmm.
All right, we are, next, next item on the agenda is item number All right, we are next. Next item on the agenda is item number 11, executive session. The council is going to adjourn into executive session to discuss pending litigation. We believe this will take about 10 minutes. When council re-adjourns, there will be no further action. So if I could ask everyone that is not presenting on this topic to clear council chambers, that would be fantastic. Thank you. litigation. There is nothing else on the agenda, no action items. I want to say congratulations on reelection to councilmember Michaux, councilmember Larmour, councilmember Boyce. Welcome councilmember Boyd, and congratulations, council president Core. So looking forward to working with all of you in the upcoming year. So with that, we are adjourned.